Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of May 1st, 2024. The Council, City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act, and community members are welcome to join either in person, remote via Zoom, or by calling in. For those who wish to participate in the future via Zoom, you can find the instructions to register for public comment on the City of Everett website under the City Council Department. Please note, we do not allow comments of any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures, or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. We ask that audience refrain from clapping, cheering, and booing, and no signs of any kind are allowed in the chambers. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
Councilmember Toohey?
Here.
Councilmember Vogel?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Vice President Zarlinco?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Here.
I would like to ask Councilmember Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to read the land acknowledgement.
The City Council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahusha people and their successors, the Tulayup tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people's stories and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes for April 24th, 2024?
Councilmember Ryan, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlinco?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, President Schwab and councilmembers. I have a few comments tonight. First, it is International Workers' Day, or May Day, so this day acknowledges our international labor movement and the ongoing work to support workers' rights. I know our council is very supportive of our labor organizations, and I just want to thank all our labor organizations and their members for the work that they do to build and protect our community and their role in supporting our city and residents and our economy. And then, tonight, council has a very big decision before them, probably one of the most impactful and important actions considered by all of you in a very long time. For over 20 years, Everett, like many other Washington cities, has faced a structural deficit mainly due to the state's 1% cap on property tax. And since I took office in 2018, addressing the deficit has been a top priority, and I know it's been a concern for years during the previous administration under Mayor Stephenson. For years, the council and I have been faced with many increasingly difficult decisions as we work to develop a balanced, fiscally responsible budget each year, protecting essential services while at the same time having to find millions of dollars to cut. We've become more efficient and leaner. We've continued to reorganize city teams to try to do more with less, far less than our peer cities. And now we've reached a point where there isn't anything left to cut. Further cuts would severely impact services that our residents enjoy and rely on, and putting a measure before our voters like this is a difficult choice, but I believe it's the right decision. By putting the measure before our voters, our council is ensuring that our Everett residents and property owners have a voice in our city's future. Everyone up here on this dais loves the city and is passionate about providing essential quality services to our residents. As a mom, I am very passionate about this. It's been a joy to raise my daughter here, and when she was young, it was our parks and playgrounds that she appreciated most, and now that she's older, it's cultural arts and our waterfront and all kinds of, you know, vibrant things going on in our community that she loves. I think all of us appreciate the essential things that we provide, like our safe roads, responsive first responders, libraries. These types of services are important to all of us. And I've said before that we can't cut our way into a prosperous future for the city. I don't get a vote on the council. I don't have a vote tonight, but I just wanted to reiterate to the council and the public that I'm very supportive of a moderate property tax increase that will allow us to continue providing and supporting beloved essential services. The lift will also give us time to thoroughly consider and advocate for changes that will secure Everett's financial stability long into the future. The past few years, our city has grown in amazing and wonderful ways, including new developments, local businesses, industries, and job centers. We have big challenges like all cities, such as the drug crisis, the mental health crisis, and homelessness, and we are working hard to address those really important issues. But through these challenges, we all know Everett is a wonderful place to live, and the services that our city staff, teams provide, I think, are an important part of making the city a wonderful place to live. I also am very confident that Everett is going to continue to be stronger and better, especially through our collective continued efforts, focus, and support. So I just, again, wanted to thank each one of you up here on the dais tonight for your attention to this, your conversations that you've been having, and your work to ensure Everett's strong financial health and future. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for public comment, which includes written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments shall be considered in the same manner as oral comments. The commenter must provide their name and city of residence. When comments submitted without that information, they will not be made part of the official record, but we usually read them anyway. Angie, do we have any written comments, or anyone signed up this evening to speak?
Good evening, President Schwab. We do. We have some written comments, so I'll read those out first. The following names are in regards to the Council Neighborhoods ARPA funds, Dwayne Steeg, Miles Westner, and Cindy Crenshaw. The next group of names are in regards to Clark Park Gazebo, and that's Dulce Stout, Ellen Miller, Jay McClure, Barbara George on behalf of Everett Museum of History, and Henry Cotter. The following is in regards to B and O Tax, and that's from Everett Auto Dealers, which consisted of nine supporting signatures. And the last is in regards to Levy Lidlift, and that was from Joanne Black, and I provided these to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. And we have one individual in chambers. If Evan could please come to the podium, and please hit the right button on the base of the mic. You have three minutes to speak. Just state your first, or your full name and your city of residence.
Good evening, council. Nice to see you again. Evan Reed, City of Everett, Executive Director of Bunker Arts Collective. Quick update, our new total is currently 6.7 tons of litter removed since November of 2023. Earth Day was one ton alone. In two hours, we did it with 17 volunteers. It was awesome. Over 200 single-use sharps collected, averaging approximately 10 volunteers per cleanup, and we've completed over 25 cleanup sites across the city of Everett. We've removed a little over two dozen territorial gang signs on residential commercial properties. Another update, I had mentioned in a previous meeting, we had received a $10,000 grant through the Snohomish County Division of Behavioral Health. We're moving forward with that. That will include three murals for the Marysville Boys and Girls Club, which I am selfishly now the director of, a community garden, a little free library, and a community food pantry. But admittedly, once we're reimbursed, all that money's going to go back into Everett. So that $10,000 is then going to be used for 15 murals, 10 free Art in the Park opportunities around Everett Public Parks, and then some much-needed repairs for the big yellow van that we purchased in January that has been our main fleet vehicle. In a previous meeting, I spoke about the user interface from a resident's perspective when using the city's See Click Fix reporting system. When a resident reports vandalism on their property, every response receives an automated confirmation that the report went through, and they will receive updates as soon as possible. The site has two categories to choose from: submit a code violation complaint and/or send a report on graffiti. If they categorize the complaint under Send a Report on Graffiti, the two most consistent human-generated responses we see are the following. Example one, the Everett train station had some vandalism. A resident reported it. The report was assigned to a transit staff member, and then, within two days, the user was notified that the vandalism was removed, and the request was closed. Example two, a resident reports vandalism in what is clearly a single-family home, a property type which is stated to qualify under the city's residential graffiti abatement program. They receive a human-generated response that it is not on city property, and they should contact code enforcement, and that the report is now closed. I'm seeking clarification why a report from residential property owner who has already reported the graffiti on See Click Fix can't have their report assigned to a code enforcement officer on their behalf. Is there a reason why they need to report the graffiti again if they already reported it? It's like putting salt in the wound. I'd understand if the code violation complaint form was utilizing a different reporting system, but that's not the case. Code enforcement is very obviously using See Click Fix. So example one sees a clear resolution, whereas example two gets pointed in two different directions. So I guess what I'm asking is, what can be done differently to nudge our residents in the right direction, who are just trying to get their reports heard and accounted for, but also just make sure it gets to the right department? Thank you.
Thank you. I have another individual that would like to speak.
I think Jennifer wanted to quickly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, Council President. Just in response briefly to that specific question, we're continuously doing process improvement with the See Click Fix with Everett at Work, that's what we want to call it, with that program. So that's a great example that I will forward to the team. I know our intent is that that should be an easy entry point to city services, so I think ideally we would want that process to route somebody through to the code enforcement and our excellent graffiti removal program that would quickly resolve the graffiti issue on single-family property. So, anyway, so that is definitely the intent, and we're still, we're constantly working through the process on that, so.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Okay, next.
Chelsea, can you please come to the podium? Instinct your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Sure. Chelsea Gray, Everett, Washington. Back when I was a person, an American citizen, and a lawful contributing member of the City of Everett for the past nine years, enjoying all of the supposedly inalienable human and American rights and protections endowed to such a status, and at all levels of the government. Well, back then, I was Chelsea Gray, and you all know me by now because this is my 13th meeting. So, you know, I know way too many of you, in fact. Mayor Cassie Franklin, who I've addressed in public many times, EPD Captain White, Chief De Souza, Deputy Chief Irving, Lieutenant Ponte back here, Officer Summerfield, and a whole lot of sergeants and officers that I would have happily gone my whole life without ever having known existed, and vice versa, I'm sure, had I not become the target of an ambitious series of attacks, both federal and state, digital and physical, that have, as every one of you sat idle over the past seven months, evolved into the development and deploy and execution of a brand-new super cyber weapon. You want to know what it does, right? Well, it seizes control over any targeted devices, any attached networks, accounts, and systems, and it asserts admin-level control over all of the above, and it downgrades the permissions of the rightful user. It runs on all commercially available operating systems, so to include Mac and iOS, Android, Windows, and Linux, runs on all the latest versions, and all of the predecessors as well. Now, this is where I generally lose people who don't have a background in IT systems and tech. What that means is that terrorist attackers who are executing this attack against anyone or all of you, as they have and are doing to me, they assert control of your cameras and mics, they turn them on and off at will, and obtain illegally surveilled footage, and they sell that footage or the live feed of it online. Scary, right? But that's just the beginning, because with admin-level control, you know, they've got your passwords, they've got your biometrics, your network credentials, and they'll start running through your entire digital life and data as if they are you, and having downgraded your permissions as if you are not you anymore. That applies to your carriers and networks. You'll find yourself being systematically locked out of all your apps and accounts, and by this time, you'll know something is really wrong, and you'll get a new phone and maybe a new modem, and you'll change all your passwords, and you'll make all new accounts, just as everybody tells you to do. You'll think, thank God, this is over. And I went through this a number of times, as you all know. The worst thing about this attack is that it's deployed by remote.
If you could finish up, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah. So you can be sitting here, somebody outside, all it needs is a 100-foot radius around you, sitting on your couch, and obviously, it's deployed by Flipper Zero. And after that, a bug or a program called Remote Settings Control is coded into the firmware of the attack device, meaning that anyone in the world can
We thank you.
remote control your systems.
Appreciate your point of view. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. It's not a point of view, so I've got a lot of evidence. I would ask you guys, please, to call in the FBI. This is very, very serious.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And then we have one more comment, but not until Agenda Item Number Nine.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone online?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to council comments and liaison reports. Councilmember Ryan?
Great. Good evening, everybody. Happy Wednesday. Thank you to Evan, who joined earlier. 6.6 tons is about four baby humpback whales, so just wanted to share that fun fact with everybody. Also, really glad to hear about the focus on murals here in the city. I think that'll help brighten up some dark corners on dark days, so glad to hear about that. Earlier tonight, we had the Health and Human Services Committee meeting, and we had a video from Chris Collier, the program manager with Housing Authority of Snohomish County, and he always does a great job delivering really awful news about the state of housing affordability in Everett and Snohomish County. And so he shared some graphs showing just how the trajectory of rental increases over time in the city, and then also comparing that to wage increases over time, and how those lines do not meet up, and in fact, they're separating quite a bit. So I, and then we also had some representatives from the Housing Justice Project, which is part of the Snohomish County Legal Services Team, and they shared about the work that they've been doing with eviction services for, I guess it's in their 40th year now, but specifically, they shared data showing trends from about 2018 until this year. And during the pandemic, there were a lot of protections in place for our tenants who had maybe lost a job or whatnot, and so many of those protections have expired, and so the graphs that they showed were just the trajectory increase of eviction filings in Everett and across Snohomish County. They shared that of the top 10 zip codes in the state of Washington for calls to 211 for shelter and housing services, Everett has two of the top 10 zip codes in the whole state. So we have a lot of folks that are living on the edge of possibly being evicted. They're just, you know, one unfortunate circumstance away from that. So I'd love to keep looking into ways that we can support tenants and protect tenant rights and protect our, and just tenant protections in general, so that we can make sure that we help keep our Everett residents housed. And I also wanted to share Happy May Day as well. Today's International Workers' Day, and it's a commemoration and celebration of the efforts of workers past and present who have championed labor rights and paved the way for better workplace standards. May Day serves as a reminder of the importance of collective action and to recognize the progress we've made to the ongoing fight for workplace justice. Let's recommit to striving for better working conditions, fair wages, and respect for all workers. Cese Poide. Happy May Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Bader?
No report, no comment. Thanks.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilmember Ryan for your update on our committee meeting today. It was very humbling, and in that chart of the top 10 zip codes, we're actually number two and four. So that's a lot for one city to absorb with people that are needing, seeking eviction help. So that was all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogel?
Thanks. Let's see. Earlier today, I got to actually be on the same Zoom call as Chris Collier and everyone else at Alliance for Housing Affordability. We discussed various jurisdictions, updates on their comp plans, and in regards to this, I wish to shout out the folks here who put together the website for our comp plan in Everett and how to get involved. I sent it out to neighboring jurisdictions, and a couple of them actually looked at it. And so, just giving kudos because nice job done. Also, unincorporated Snohomish County is just, well, Snohomish County, but it deals with unincorporated, you know, not cities and towns, is discussing a mixed-use corridor zone, something like our MFTE program. It sounds exciting. And a vote took place to convene future AHA meetings to the first Wednesday of the month so as not to overlap with Snohomish County tomorrow, so our next meeting will be August 7th. Finally, good wishes to Becky Ableman McCrery on her retirement. I got a notice that she retired as of today, so if you're watching, which I'm sure you're not, we'll miss you. May is, the whole month of May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Reminder, you are not alone. It is also Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and there are lots of programs out in the universe to figure out what to do with that. And May 4th, well, may the 4th be with you, but Westmont Holly Neighborhood Association is having their regular meeting at the Evergreen branch of the Everett Public Library. I cannot remember what time it is. It's probably 11, but it might be 1:00. But they're also having a container gardening class, so, and it's free, of course, because it's part of the meeting and part of the library. And Chelsea, I just want you to know that others have spoken to me about this issue, so I actually kind of know what you're talking about. And that's really all I can say about it, but I hear you, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse?
I was also able to attend the Housing and Human Services meeting, and it was very informative, and I'm very much looking forward to what is coming before us in the future, because it does seem like we really need to address some of these issues. If you haven't had a chance to watch that meeting, it was very informative, and so you can watch those online on the website to get a little information about where we are with regards to renters and tenants and what they're facing, and yeah, something definitely needs to be done, so looking forward to that. Thank you to everyone that volunteered with Downtown Everett Association Planting Day. It looks beautiful out there, and yes, it's the first day of the Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and towards the end of this month, the Marshallees will also be having their Constitution Day festivities, which happens in my district over at Jackson Park, so keep an eye out for that closer to the end of the month, and Happy May Day.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zarlinco?
Well, first of all, Evan, thank you for the feedback, in particular with respect to Everett at Work. Reported some graffiti yesterday, and yeah, it was on private property, so streamlining that and getting it to code enforcement will save me a step, but I'll take that step anyway. And I guess I'm certainly aware of the difficulties with rent and evictions and costs, and part of this is part of the desirability of Everett. We're a place with jobs, and that jobs means income, and that means competition for both purchase and rent of housing, and there's no easy answer on this. I think it's just going to be up to all of us to keep pushing to get more and better housing and keep it affordable and protect the rights of the tenants as well. Last week, spent an evening at an event called Books Before Bed. This was at Discovery Elementary. This is basically reading to kids in pajamas. In advance, I asked the librarians there for some recommendations, and, because I knew I wasn't up to date on what elementary school kids are reading these years, I got some really good suggestions. One was an imaginative, funny, and really irreverent take on famous traditional fairy tales. Another was a story, an art combination that was based on a couple of Native American traditions. I was really grateful for the chance to read to the kids and experience some different fairy tales and different legends, and also grateful to the staff, the PTA, and the parents who worked to get their kids away from the phones and the computers and the TVs and in front of some neat books. And also, last week, attended the Silver Lake Neighborhood Association meeting, helping keep good connections between the city and neighbors, and actually, in that case, that neighborhood, the half of that neighborhood that's outside of the city of Everett but is inside the city's eventual urban growth boundary. This helps foster some extended discussions that night in particular that went on for most of another hour, looking at the thorny issues behind homelessness, emotional health issues, drug abuse, treatment, and recovery. So really grateful for the chance to work with the neighborhood group on that, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Do I have administrative report?
Well, I'll have comments on a couple items later, but I just thought I would share that the very cool-sounding, small-space container gardening class that Councilmember Vogel mentioned is on May 4th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Evergreen Branch Library, so it sounds like a fun opportunity. Yeah, so that's it.
Thank you. City Attorney David Hall?
No report, no executive session.
Thank you. Okay, before you, we have consent items one through five. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion to second to adopt items one through five. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlinco?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. All right. The following two proposed action items, six and seven, have been read into the record. Does council have any questions for items six and seven? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to our action items. Number eight, authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with concor addiction, PLLC. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to second. Is there any questions? Councilmember Ryan?
Great. Yeah, happy to see this come forward today. We had discussed it at our Human Services Committee, I believe, two months ago, and had the briefing last week as well. I think this is going to be a great addition to the city's team to address the opioid epidemic. On the PSA, I noticed that they have metrics added for tracking, and I assume there will be a report back to council at the end of the year when the PSA expires, and just would like to request that the report includes suggestions on possible policy recommendations or policy redactions that we could implement or identify gaps in the system or things we should add to our state legislative agenda. The work that they're doing to do street-level outreach of this type is, it's a new experience for the cities. I think there's going to be a lot of learning lessons, and I think this type of outreach will garner a number of lessons learned on effective ways that we can better address the opioid epidemic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a thumbs up. All right. Any other questions about item number eight?
Counsel, President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Bader, I heard your voice before I saw your hand.
I think Councilmember Vogel actually had her hand up first.
Okay. Councilmember Vogel?
With Councilmember Ryan's, I hear, I see acknowledgement, I hear acknowledgement. I'm wondering if we need to write acknowledgement that those things will happen, at least in the minutes? I don't know how that might work, if not an amendment.
You really shouldn't have to. We'll report back probably more than once a year. This is an important program, and I think your committees will probably get reports much more often, so.
Okay, just double-checking. Thank you. Not necessary.
Thank you. Councilmember Bader?
Thanks, Council President. Obviously eager to get those reports as frequently as possible. A little concerned that, it feels like we're guinea pigs on a program like this. I don't think we were pointed to any other cities that have really done this. I know we're desperate to do things that need doing, and I will vote yes on this, but just concerned about kind of the guinea pig nature. It feels like we're engaged in here and the potential to, to kind of, I guess, the concern I voiced last week, that it might draw others here, and just the sense that our businesses and residents are already concerned about the numbers of people we have on the street, and I'm hoping this will positively impact that, but eager for those, and I vote, I'll vote yes for this with some concern. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Council President. I can just add that King County and Watcom County I can just add that King County and Watcomb County have street medicine teams, that's what this is. So they are in existence. They also received funding from the state in the operating budget this year, so we're joining them. Spokane was also one of the agencies that was named, and I want to say somebody in Kitsap, too. I don't know if it was a city or a county, but, so there are a few places around the state that are, that were funded to do this this year, and then a couple that already have programs underway.
Now, I'll just jump in. I was just with 49 mayors in Washington, D.C. on homelessness, and because we're all dealing with the fentanyl crisis, this is just kind of beyond something that we've, any of us cities have experienced before. This is seen as an emerging best practice, but we're all still collecting data. So absolutely, we will report back frequently. I completely understand, you know, something new like this is always a question mark of how, what it's going to be like, and so we'll be sure to report back frequently, and I will try to get some information from those peer cities that are doing that, so I can share that with you as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmembers Arlingo.
Yeah, one of the biggest chunks of that extended discussion we had at our neighborhood group meeting with several of us was the appropriateness and alternatives of response other than police and fire to drug and emotional health issues. So this is, this is a step in that direction. And I guess in terms of some feedback into how well it's working and how we might tune that, what I'd like to ask for is some input, again, some months from now, from our first responders, police and fire, in terms of how this is working with their teams, because presumably it will make that work better. And the other angle on that in terms of is it doing what it intends to do would be, is it coordinating well with, is it relieving some of the burden and sending more appropriate resources to people who need them? So that angle may help us know if we're doing the right or the best thing.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, item number nine, I'm going to move to the very end of our agenda tonight. So we'll go into item 10. Now, item 10 is on the agenda as a table ordinance that has been amended, and that amendment has passed. The ordinance has been amended that include $100,000 for neighborhood grant funding. Any council member can make a motion to bring the budget item from the table, and it requires a simple majority to do so. Once it's back from the table, a motion to approve would be a separate vote. So at this point, I entertain a motion to bring item 10 from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you, any comment? Okay, clerk, will you take the roll?
And the role?
Actually, I changed my, you're actually not supposed to have any comment when you bring a table, something from the table and back. So I screwed up my own rules. So you don't get to say anything. So clerk, please take the roll.
Just bringing it back from the table. Okay. Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Okay, item number 10 has been removed from the table. I'm going to read it.
Yes or no, I think.
Oh, yes.
Not just okay.
Thank you, my accountability partner. All right, item number 10, Council Bill 2404-97, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance approving the appropriations of 2024 revised City of Everett budget as amended on April 24th, 2024, and amending ordinance number 3983-23. Do I have, hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of second. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, please.
Okay. Councilmember Vogely.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my proposed amendment to Council Bill 2404-97, but I would wish to make a statement regarding the withdrawal. May I?
You may.
As you all, thank you. As you all know, I have been asking questions about the process and the budget regarding the acquisition of the Waits Motel and the relocation of its residents for approximately one year. As the answers continued to lack clarity, I chose to answer my questions with a proposed budget amendment. Upon doing so, I had the opportunity to discuss the logistics of the situation with staff and found that CIP4 funds are indeed being utilized in an equitable fashion in regards to the non-applicable federal uniform relocation act of 1970. Thumbs up for those that didn't see it. For current and future topics regarding legislative action and budget items, I would encourage candid conversations rooted in truth so as not to replicate this type of ill communication between administration and council. I still believe the action of condemnation was counterproductive to reducing crime in the area, and instead will have far-reaching negative results that will continue until we seek to implement policy that aims to heal past transgressions and build community. Until then, the budget is working as intended. Thank you very much.
Okay, and for clarification, for those who might be watching, that refers to the Waits Motel amendment that you had made last, last meeting.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
NGA 3.
All right, so before you is item 10, Council Bill 2404. Do I have any questions or comments?
One more comment.
Okay, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Vogely, for your continued advocacy and for watchdogging this important matter. I find it unfortunate that due to the absence of information and responses to your inquiries, and mine too, that you were put in a position to bring forth your own amendment to ensure that the residents of the Waits are being cared for and for clarity on the plan that was in place, though I am glad that in doing so, the information was finally provided to us and that the matter could resolve. So I thank you for your persistence.
Okay, any other comments or questions about item 10, Council Bill 2404?
Council President.
As amended. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, administration, thank you.
If, anyways, if it's all right for right now.
Yes, please.
On that item, just wanted to thank Councilmember Vogely for being available to meet in person with our staff to talk about those questions. I think that was a really, I wasn't there, but I have heard that it was a really productive couple meetings and conversation, and probably the right method to get at the information that you were looking for versus the, you know, kind of long email exchanges that we'd been using and public records requests and things like that. So as a model for the future, if there's other items that are frustrating, that's a great way, you know, to have that open conversation. And then I'm, and I guess along with that, I'm glad that those meetings demonstrated how the city is taking care of the former residents of the Waits. So.
I'm happy to report that all residents have been relocated, so there are no residents currently residing in the Waits. We're still working with them, and we'll continue to work with them as you discussed with our team, but they're safely in more suitable housing right now.
Okay, and then, Edmond, did you have any other?
I did have one other thing. There it is.
Yeah.
This screen, too many windows. On the budget amendment as amended, last week you passed a motion that added one-time funding opportunity to infuse support to our neighborhoods with the help of the Council of Neighborhoods, and we look forward to implementing that, assuming this budget amendment passes tonight. We appreciate the clarification that council provided through that motion that you passed last week, and I just want to point out a few things that will still be relevant as we implement that, though they weren't included in the motion. So staffing resources are really limited in the community engagement team, communications and engagement team. So we're going to do our best to accommodate what is a new and large project. Our staff are going to ensure that there's staff review of any expenditures, just like we did with the COVID, other council COVID recovery funds. That just allows for legal compliance, to ensure that there's no gifts of public funds, that application of prevailing wage laws are in place where it's relevant or required, other things such as ensuring the equity and geographic spread through all the neighborhoods that was in the motion. Those things mean that just to level set expectations, it might move a little more slowly than Council of Neighborhoods or even the city council might anticipate, but know that this does give an opportunity to deliver great projects with that one-time funding opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Item 10 is before you. Clerk, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. All right, moving on to our briefing and proposed action item, I'll read item number 11, Council Bill 2404-01, first reading, adopt a ordinance relating to amendments to city's procurement policy, amending ordinance 3781-20, third and final reading is 5/15/2024. We have Finance Director Susie Haugen here to brief us.
Council President, just to clarify, it does say briefing and action, but as you mentioned, it is not action tonight, it's just briefing.
Okay, but we're still having our first, first.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, so it's briefing and proposed action item.
Correct.
Yes, thank you. Hello, Susie, it's, this is, we're wearing down here, you don't have many of these meetings left.
I know. That is very true. Good evening. I believe a few months ago I had mentioned that I would be bringing a couple of amendments forward for our procurement policy. You know, inflation has had a really significant impact, not just on the cost of goods and services, but also on operations. And these amendments are intended to address those impacts and improve efficiencies in our procurement process. So the first change has to do with a new provision in state law regarding the small works roster. The small works roster is a list of Washington licensed contractors that public agencies can use to ask for public works bids on projects of $350,000 or less. Using the roster for these small projects provides access to a much larger pool of contractors and consultants and allows these businesses to register with multiple agencies via single application. So it's a win-win on both sides. It's also less restricted and a lot faster than full formal competitive bids. So this new provision that will be in effect on July 1st allows for an even more streamlined process for projects up to $150,000. It allows for direct negotiation with small businesses and others for projects under that threshold. There are some additional requirements associated with this new provision, such as tracking awards to ensure that the city is rotating these opportunities throughout the roster, and the development of a small business utilization policy and procedure. The second change increases the threshold to allow project managers to obtain quotes for goods and services up to $100,000. Our procurement staff is very lean, and extending this authority to departments will help departments obtain the things that they need to deliver public services more quickly. Procurement staff will continue to review quotes for compliance and issue purchase orders to ensure that all necessary terms and conditions are included. I also wanted to give you a sense of where our peer cities are with regard to this provision. As you can see, there's a fair amount of variation. However, the trend is going towards the $100,000 threshold primarily in response to the high inflation we've been experiencing. And that concludes that briefing.
Okay, they just keep getting shorter, don't they?
They do.
All right, thank you very much. Do I have any, any questions or comments from council? Okay, Councilmember Vogely.
I didn't prepare, I just have thoughts in my mind. So, goods and services include PSAs, which is professional services agreements, correct or not? Services.
Services. They may result in a PSA. So services like consulting services or fit place efficiency studies, any kind of consulting services that may result in a PSA. It's not the only, if we do an RFP for services, then we probably would do a PSA as the contracting method.
Okay.
Maybe that might be too detailed.
You cannot get too detailed. Maybe for the listening audience, but not for me.
Oh, you said.
Okay. And I am going to think some more because this is just the first reading, and I will preview some questions to you so we can talk about it more later. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Maybe just, so that, that change is for soliciting bids. It doesn't cover the signing authority, so items that come to city council for approval is the same. It's just how we're soliciting the bids for those items, or the RFP for those items, if that is helpful as you think about it.
Thank you.
And for anybody who is not familiar with Teresa, she is our purchasing manager.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none. All right, thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll move on to action item number nine that was brought, was put to the end. I will read number nine, adopt a resolution providing for the submission of a proposition on August 6, 2024 ballot, authorizing the city to levy regular property taxes in excess of limitations of chapter 84.55 RCW, and appointing three members of each to the voters' pamphlet pro and con committees. So for council information, the selection process for the pro and con committees, and I know there were questions, there were submissions to speak from both sides. The rule is we assign up to three members to lead each committee. If there are more than three applicants, we do a random selection. On the con side, there is only three names submitted, so their names are being, are already written on the, and considered in this revolution, resolution, resolution. On the pro sides, there are eight applicants, and staff did a random selected of these three names, and that's also part of the resolution. So, so.
Jennifer, do you want to speak what you did?
Did I do okay?
You did great.
Okay.
I would like a little bit more if you'd like to hear.
Okay, did anyone, any questions about how we select the cons and pros? Councilmember Judy?
Yeah, I just had a question on how we publicized it, because I didn't notice anything or see anything.
It was, yeah, so we, so we did a press release, had it posted on the city website and put it on social media, and I'm like, almost positive that I mentioned it here, but we've had lots of long meetings as well, so.
Well, I remember you talked about how it had part of the process, but I don't remember ever hearing that it, applications were out there, so.
I might not have flagged it for you guys, that is true, yeah.
Okay.
Did you want to tell about the process, what you did?
Yeah, yeah. So on the pro-con piece of it, and Council President Schwab spoke to this a little bit already, but that, just for a little extra background, the pro-con committees are tasked by the county auditor to write the statements that go on the voters' pamphlet. They do, they do an original statement that has a word limit and then rebuttal to each other, and they do that pretty quickly. As candidate, past candidates yourselves, you know when those voter pamphlet arguments are due and it's similar timeline. So with legal advice, the best practice for that selection is to do it randomly. The intent is to avoid the appearance that the city is selecting persons in an effort to taint the process. It's a ministerial duty. That's why it, actually, if we didn't, if you didn't take action tonight, it would just be left to the county auditor to do it. It's not designed to allow the city to exercise any influence. So we did, or I did a random draw of the names and had a couple observers from administration staff, and, and the results, Council President Schwab alluded to them, but I think just for the public and for the record, the folk, the three applicants for the con committee, of course, no random draw needed for them, that's Erin Knight, Carolyn Cox, and Terry Norris. And the three that came up for the pro committee are Jordan Stevens, Jose Villalas, and Justin Palacek. And then I have stuff about the resolution, too, but maybe there's questions about the pro-con part.
We'll hold, we'll just work on the process on this part.
Yeah.
Councilmember Zarlingo.
Well, I guess, is that committee, the pro and con group, going to be open to suggestions from outside that committee? Are there going to be contact information so that folks who have a particular perspective can seek to have that included?
So the pro-con commit, the both committees can seek information wherever they choose, and I think, I think we'd already contemplated this, but it's been a, been a couple days, you know, of a lot of work to get here. So we will be able to share the full, the contact information with the pro applicants in particular. So they'll each know the three that they have, and then the pro side will also see the names and emails of the other five, and if they want to have a bigger work group that works on that statement, that's really up to them. And I've served on, on voters pamphlet committees in the past and usually you do get advice from others. Maybe you draft it together, but you share the statement.
Well, I'm thinking if there's someone in our, in our hearing who want to have that input, who should they contact to be put in contact with the pro and con?
Me, always, yeah, I'm always a good place to start.
We'd love that.
And it's important to say that we have absolutely no say in this process, just to connect the people together.
Yeah.
Equally. And it's really up to them what they, what they submit. That's the part that we, we have no, no part of, so.
Yeah, I would just share sort of the public record of their email with anyone who contacted me and encourage them to reach out to those relevant committee members.
So, do I have any questions about the con and pro process? Councilmember Vogel.
Maybe you wrote it in an email, I'm not sure, I cannot remember, but is there a reason why the city has chosen to do the random drawing and not the auditor?
If we let the auditor do it, then I guess you could, I mean, you don't have to pick those three, you could just forward all eight names to the auditor.
Is there a time commitment? I mean, because I know we need to get this, if I'm thinking of the right thing. I know we need to get this by Friday.
That's right. Yeah, I think, so I think for the committee applicants, it is useful for them to be, for the names to be transmitted to the auditor by Friday rather than here's some name, because the auditor will go through a, and actually, this is.
Yeah, we have Alice Ostick here, who's our outside counsel on this, who's done levy lid lift for a number of municipalities in the state and I, I think she has a thought on this and I'm hoping it's the same thought that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, for the record, Alice Ostick with Stradling, working on this levy lid lift with these folks. So, yes, the statute, the way it's written, it says that the city council shall, you know, appoint, shall select the members of this pro and con committee and then there is a fallback position that the county can do it if you don't. So, the way it's set up, it's sort of the preferences that the city make a selection. I think the county would use the same process. I'm not positive, but I believe that they would just select out of hat as well, so.
And Alice, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking that if we were to now punt to the county, it would look like we didn't like the folks that were selected here and they were, we were therefore exercising the kind of influence that we're not supposed to because we wanted a different mix?
Yeah, it is, it, I mean, it is, you know, because you have a slate now, it would look not great to be able to be forwarding on a different slate or a different selection process.
Perception is key. Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Any other questions about the process here before we go on to the motion? Or a motion potentially, okay? Hearing none, so before you is item number nine. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, just, would you like some background information, like a mini briefing on it?
Okay, sure.
We could, you could, okay, well, assuming that's useful.
Yes.
So, so the resolution that is in your packet plate would place a levy lid lift of $2.19 per 1,000 of assessed value on the August ballot. That amount equates to a little less than $30 a month for the average household and potentially around a 1% rent increase for renters if landlords were to pass the increase on to their tenants. The resolution shows the ballot title as an exhibit. The ballot title is meant by statute to be written by the city attorney or legal representation. They're not strictly legislative matters, they don't contain policy or they don't, or limit the resolution itself, their preparation is meant to be ministerial. The resolution, of course, is like any other resolution that comes before you and should represent your intent. Yeah, that was all that I had is the, is some background info.
Okay, and we can have discussion if we get a motion.
Yeah, right.
So, at this time, is there a motion for?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of adopting this resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and second. Now, item, action number nine is open for discussion. Oh, I guess we should do the public comment first, thank you.
Okay, so if Scott can please come to the podium? And please state your full name, city of residence, and you have been approved to do five minutes.
Thank you, appreciate that. Good evening, council. My name is Scott Murphy and I reside in the Northwest neighborhood of Everett, here to speak on this property tax increase initiative that the mayor has proposed. I have five key points I want to make. First, having served on the council for nine years, I certainly understand the complexity and challenges with the city budget and the finances in general. Just like any large enterprise, it's always difficult to balance the priorities and the revenues and the expenses and all of the things that need to be done. And that's perfectly normal. What is also normal in any large enterprise is an ongoing effort to ensure process improvement, efficiencies, that the city is running with whatever automation that can help our employees be more effective and that there's a focus on continuing to improve productivity. Also, I just want to thank the staff here because I know they've worked really hard on putting a lot of information together over the last many meetings, so that, that's kind of point number one. Second, I want to state as I did two weeks ago here at the council that I believe putting this tax increase on the ballot is really putting the cart before the horse. And why do I say that? As I pointed out two weeks ago, there really appears to be a lot of work that still needs to be done on this city budget with regard to the expenses. And I had given you some examples two weeks ago of a number of departments that in just looking at the 2024 budget relative to 2021, when I left the council, some of the changes that had happened. So, just to recap real quickly, marketing and communications up over 250% from $400,021 to $1 million in '24. Human resources budget up 52% in three years. Planning department up 94% in three years. Legal department up 32% in three years. And the administration department, the mayor's department and her direct reports, up 64% in just three years. So, in looking at all of these expenses, clearly, they are far above inflation or any sort of argument that inflation would justify. And there are other departments throughout the budget book that I found that are far above the rate of inflation, but I'll let you dig into that. The third point I want to make, I really want to encourage the city council to dig into this and it has to do with the carryforward. Every year, there's a carryforward that results from not only expense savings, but also revenue enhancements. And what I always found at the city, and I'm not disagreeing with this methodology, but what I always found at the city is that the revenue estimates always tend to be very conservative and so usually, in most cases, the revenue comes in better than what the budget has said. And also, all of the open positions, the vacancies, also come back as cost savings. And my understanding is, is that there are a number of vacancies currently in the city, maybe as many as 30 in just the police department. Now, let me also say, I want to see those positions filled, but in the meantime, they represent substantial costs that are not being spent and there really needs to be a reforecast done of the city's finances that has some very real assumptions about revenue and about expenses and cost savings. So, the fourth point I want to make is to do with what I said at the beginning and that is the operations of the city. There's been a lot of information provided by Suzy and the team over the last several months on this topic and it's talked about a lot of the initiatives and the savings and programs that have been put in place over the last, I think, 10 years is kind of the baseline. And most of those occurred either in 2020 or prior. And there may have been some things more recently, but I would really encourage you to go back and look at just the last three years because if there have been cost savings, they really aren't translating into much in terms of expense savings because we've, we've identified that the expenses have ballooned and are through the roof. So, the, the final point I wanted to make, the fifth and final point, is that clearly the city does have a financial problem and I would just remind the council that Everett is not a wealthy community. You've been talking about rent increases across the city and the impact on evictions and this is only going to exacerbate that. So, again, the bottom line, I would just suggest that this tax increase is going to hit Everett residents hard and businesses and I would encourage you not to put the cart before the horse and do that hard work on this budget before you put a property tax increase to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comments.
And thank you. All right, so we have, we do have a motion and a second before you, action number, number nine. Do we have discussion? Okay, who do you want to go first? Councilmember Ryan?
Man.
Okay, well, anyone else?
No, that's okay. I did have a wording amendment that I wanted to put forward, but I'd be happy to open up for discussion first if folks had things they wanted to share.
Okay.
Councilmember Vogel.
Again, did not write this down beforehand, so here goes. There has been a lot of conversation, we have been talking about this for quite some time and I'm sure a lot of you know that I scour the budget books like every year. And so, this is a comment and essentially, yes, we are a poor city. You've heard me mention the top ramen budget scenario in previous years, but this vote to put something on the ballot is just that. And I am encouraged to find out what the voting public actually would like to see. So, it could pass or it could fail. You know, just because we put it in front of the voters doesn't mean it's going to pass and that could be a real problem. Because we all know there is a budget deficit and there is a recurring budget deficit. So, I guess my point is it's not for us to keep it from the voters. Because this, yeah, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, and before we go into more discussion, I'm just going to offer an amendment. And that would be under section three, paragraph A titled "Purpose" and it would be going at the very end of the, of the paragraph. And be stated, "A priority will be placed on public safety, including police and fire services, exploring the options to reopen the Forest Park Pool through public-private partnership, a full-time staff position to the office of the neighborhoods, and extending library hours."
Councilmember Ryan, second.
His motion is second. Now, open discussion, I guess I'll start since I made the amendment. I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into, into this, into the language. My purpose would be to add a little bit more specifics to what are, some of our intentions are in the resolution. Obviously, what there would be voting on is something much smaller when it comes to the ballot, but I think it's really important that we put a little bit more intentions and those were the three things or four things. Obviously, public safety. I would like the, the door firmly opened or closed on the Forest Park Pool. I would like to see, okay, is that feasible or not? And I would like that, that to be, I know there's a lot of discussion about that, so I'd like to see that, that kind of scenario decided, at least to focus on it. Also, the office of neighborhoods, I know it's very important in our community. And then, of course, the extension of the library hours. Now, I, the language was intended to be open and flexible and not as refining because I know there's a lot of things that move forward, but it certainly would like the intention to be, is those would be a focus of, of this. Yes, I, I hear, I got a hand raised from our city attorney.
One finger anyway.
Okay, it doesn't take much when you, when you raise a finger.
The right finger. Just a reminder that next week you'll be adopting a resolution in support of the ballot measure and that is an opportunity to express the will of the council in a bit more detail than you might want to on the ballot measure itself if you want to preserve some flexibility but still express the will of the council.
I appreciate that and I think this leaves enough flexibility and does put some attention in that, so I appreciate that, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Ryan.
Thank you, I thank you, council president Schwab for bringing this forward today. I want to hear from community members, they ask a lot about what is the plan? What will the money be used for and what are we going to be, what's our return on investment? So, I think this is a great way to codify and outline what those, what the plan is and just to give a little bit more reassurances to the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Zerlingo.
Well, one note, I think one of the group of efforts that administration's been working on the past few years is public-private partnerships, trying to work with others to spread the load, to leverage other resources. And I guess from my standpoint, that kind of effort is something one can do with considerably more confidence if it looks like the budget is on a, a stable trajectory. If it looks like we are looking at significant cuts because of, if this kind of measure doesn't pass, then I can't imagine that we would be aggressively seeking those kinds of things because we don't have the stable budget base to seek those public-private partnerships. And certainly, as, as thorny and important as the pool is for one example of things, that, that kind of stability is something I think we're going to need.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Councilmember Bader.
Thanks. I, I generally, I think, would have, would agree with the city attorney, but I noticed in, in section 3A, it lists a lot of other services as well in terms of what we're trying to, what's trying to be preserved, so. I, I think, even though I, I think my instincts tend to lie with the point that our city attorney made, I, I think it makes sense given what the remainder of 3A says.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted a gentle reminder, I love, love the passion and support for expanding library services and hours, it's, it's really important to so many in our community, especially the Evergreen branch. Just a gentle reminder to the council and the public, we can allocate more resources to the library, but the library board actually makes a decision on how those are utilized. We, I and the council actually can't dictate that, set up very separately. So, as, if, as resources get dedicated to the library, the library board will actually be the ultimate decision maker on that one particular item, but obviously I know how important it is to our community.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, okay, on the, on the amendment, clerk, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan? Yes. Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Vice President Zerlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes, okay, on the amended resolution. Yeah, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. I would like to offer another amendment as well. Considering that 65% of our general fund budget goes to public safety and most of city services have an intersection with public safety in some way or another, I think we should be clearer about this, what this revenue stabilization will fund. And so, my amendment is to change the title to Levy-Lid Lift for Public Safety and Essential Public Services.
There's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Vogel.
Would you restate the, that, please?
Yep. So, for the, yeah, for the, for the language for the ballot specifically, City of Everett, Washington, Proposition 1, Levy-Lid Lift for Public Safety and Essential Public Services.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Oh. Okay, thank you.
So, technically, the ballot title language that's attached there, that, that will be adjusted and if that's the direction of the council, that's, that's great. Doesn't necessarily need to be the subject of an amendment. I guess my clarification question is whether you want to adjust the language in section 3A of the resolution or if you're just looking at the ballot title that's attached. So, the first sentence of section 3A of the resolution reads that the amounts collected pursuant to the incremental increase for 2025 shall be used, and there we have, "to fund quality of life and essential public services." Is that the phrase you're looking to amend?
No, because the list that follows after that starts with public safety.
Okay.
And I think we should be leading with public safety for how this revenue stabilization is going to impact our city.
Okay, so just to clarify then, the amendment is, is to the exhibit that's attached. Okay, so just to clarify then, the amendment is, is to the exhibit that's attached, and the first line of that ballot title. That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Okay, clerk, will you please take the roll on the minute?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Toohey?
Is this on the amendment?
The amendment.
Hmm, no.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Vice Presidents Arlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes, okay, so we have, the resolution has been amended twice, so questions or comments on the amended resolution? Councilmember Bader?
I'll jump in. I've been on the council since 2012, and since, I mean, the whole time I've been on the council, we've been trying to, not continuously, I was obviously off for two years, but I've been trying to deal with the difficult budget situation with structural deficit. And I certainly am sympathetic to the challenges we have here, you know, that, that our residents are tax burdened, obviously, but, but I would say, at least all the data we have, and all of the data I've, I've seen about the result of this, would, we'd still be below our neighboring, most of our neighboring jurisdictions. I've heard, had residents, you know, talk about taxes having gone up, but I would say that other than, I think, the $20 car tab and a small increase in city utility taxes, we've, the city has not been the source of most of our residents' taxes going up. The state, perhaps the school districts, certainly the RTA, have resulted in increases to our, to our residents' tax burdens. And obviously, I know this will hit, hit those who are well off, and those who aren't well off alike, but sort of draconically, chronically raising the BNO tax, which I would never, which wouldn't, I wouldn't want to consider doing, because I think that would be the goose that, or the, the kills the golden egg, or the, the kills, the goose that lays the golden egg. I wouldn't want to consider that. And so, you know, if, if there's a concern about how this is going to hit poor renters, I'd be supportive of some kind of rebate scheme for, of the tax, of this tax revenue to help poor renters. I think that would be an appropriate thing to consider. And looking at questions that have been raised, despite a recent uptick since we came out of the pandemic in some categories, at least all the data that Susie has shown us, I believe, shows that the long-term trajectory is continued slow revenue growth, that we've heard about for the last decade. And I think notably, we've also been challenged by dramatic changes in the retail landscape, and that's happened, not just in the, since I've been on the council in 2012, but even before. I know, you know, originally, the, the riverfront development was envisioned as kind of this retail center, but we know how the retail landscape has changed. And for better or worse, well, actually, not for better, but for worse, the City of Everett has come out on the short end of that, despite many efforts we can make, including the attempts at the riverfront development. In terms of expenses, I, I've seen, obviously, many, the three, three different committees that the city has appointed in the time I've been on the council to develop cost-cutting measures, and I believe most of those have been followed, followed through on. Many questions have been raised since we started this process a couple of months ago, and I'd want to give some great credit to Susie, who has given us great information, and every question that I've heard raised or challenged to the data, whether it's been the addition of FTEs, or revenue trends, et cetera, Susie's responded to those. I wish, I know you've responded to me, I wish more of those had been responded to or presented in public, though you did some great presentations as well, and I would highly recommend to our public that they go back and review each one of the, I think, half a dozen presentations you've done over the last few months. And I want to point out, I think, how reliable Susie's data is. Susie, as we know, is retiring in two months. She, she has no reason not to give us straight data about this, and it has been just the facts. She won't get a promotion if this passes. She, she won't, she won't get a bonus or a pay increase if this passes. She'll probably get criticized a lot from a lot of people and complained to, so I'm really grateful to all the data she's provided to us. And so, for those reasons, and I also, I, I believe that regardless of whether a Levy-Lid Lift passes or not, that the city will continue to have to examine where we can cut and, and cut our, and continue to operate as leanly as, as we possibly can, because we know that this Levy-Lid Lift is not a bullet, you know, isn't a one-and-done solution. We will continue to have revenue problems. I, I think it's appropriate for us to make use of the mechanism the riders of I-747 and the legislature gave us, to put in front of the voters to decide. I think Council President Schwab, last week, made a good point that if, if the riders of this had intended for revenues to never go up beyond the 1%, they wouldn't have given a mechanism for us to put it in front of the voters. And so, for all those reasons, even though it's, it's challenging, and, but I'm really, I'm going to support this, and I think it's, I'm just glad that we have the mechanism to put this in front of the voters, because I think on important issues like this, it's the voters that should be able to decide, and a significant tax increase is, is one where I think the voters properly have, properly have the role to, to decide this. Thank you. Sorry about the long-winded nature of my remarks.
No, that's good. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thank you. I also wanted to thank Susie and your team for all of your hard work to get us to this point, and really just want to thank everybody, everybody at the city who's worked these last couple of decades, and had, and have had to endure the various cuts. I know how hard it is to do more with less, and thankful to everyone who has worked so hard to keep our city moving forward. And thank you too, to Council President Schwab, for your leadership during this whole process. I know we've been a challenging group of cats to herd, so I appreciate you with your shepherd's hook. You know, and I'm also, I'm also worried about our city's most vulnerable residents, which is why, since day one, I've been supporting policies that address housing affordability and family wage jobs, and voting against initiatives that hamper our city's ability to provide the very basic of services. I'm proud to be a part of this council that has the courage to move forward with, with this, with this today, and I'll be honest, I think this action is past due. But even if it is late, let's think about it in a good way. Since we've been in a deficit for so long, the city has really trimmed every extra expense possible, and gotten incredibly creative with public-private partnerships to make our ends meet. We've been tremendous stewards of the, of taxpayer dollars. And are there more expenses to be cut? Maybe. We could not fill every pothole. We could not hire that extra police officer. We could not purchase those extra books for the library. Playground replacements could be meh, but I don't think our city should like, should be like that. Even if there are cuts available, they're not to the tune of $13 million next year, and then again, $17 million the year after that, and then $22 million the year after that, and so on. At this point, we're trying to save money by not paying our mortgage. To meet the constitutionally required balanced budget, let's remember what's at stake. Significant cuts to beloved programs like park maintenance, animal services, library services, street maintenance, our arts and culture programs, and public safety staffing, and continued delays in road and bridge repairs. I can't imagine anyone in our city wanting any of these services deteriorated or eliminated, and hope that everyone sees the value in maintaining our city's basic services. I think of this Levy-Lid Lift as a retaining wall protecting against the further erosion of city services, and I urge the support of fellow council members and voters in our city, who also want to invest towards our city's best days that are ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toohey.
Thank you. I too want to thank Susie for all of the emails and presentations. Your team just did really great. I explained last week my reasons why I'm not in favor of this particular Levy-Lid Lift property tax proposal. You know, it's very easy for us to look through the impacts of this Levy-Lid Lift through our own lens, and yes, we all can absorb this increase of what's being proposed, but we've, but we do need to look through the lens of all the families of Everett, all the people that live here. And over half, as we know, are renters. Tax will be imposed, will be passed on to them. Our median household income is the third lowest in the county, and a lot of our school, most of our schoolchildren are on free and reduced lunches. Our businesses and tenants will also see increased costs passed to them. This is a 44% increase on the city's tax that will be put upon everyone who, who owns property in Everett. And I believe a 44% increase in any kind of tax, a rate, a premium, or a price, is, is just too hefty and too much to take at one time. This is just a part of a larger impact facing our citizens today that are being forced to absorb inflation, groceries, fuel, car insurance, health insurance, healthcare. They've all skyrocketed, and it becomes a lot more than just a dollar a day. This deficit is not new to the city. It's been around for a long time. It took us years to get here, and it will take more than a one-time tax increase to get rid of the deficit. While this may help in the short run, we need long-term strategic planning to change the course of this budget, of our budget deficits, or it'll just be back if we don't. And as I expressed last week, I was not in the favor of putting this Levy-Lid Lift on the ballot, and so I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogel.
All right, this, this, thanks, Susie. You're the best. I have to chime in, but I already told you in the elevator, so. So our tax system in general is really set up to benefit the wealthy. I'm not talking city, I'm talking federal. And I remember in the seventh grade discussing Reagan's tax cuts, and it going from like 28% over, I don't remember the specifics of seventh grade, because it's been a while, but it was a big tax cut. And since then, I've learned a few things, and I can really see quite clearly the severity of the problems of federal taxes being cut so much, and it really affects the city and the state, and there's nothing we can do about that, you know, right here with this Levy-Lid Lift, but there's a lot of causation because of things that we're not in control of right here and right now. So that's just a little shout-out to the federal government to maybe fix some things, so that we don't have to go through this horrible crisis that we are being forced to. Yeah, so raise the taxes on the wealthy, you know, put that in the paper.
Okay, any other, oh, we're going around the horn here, I guess. Councilmember Fosse.
So again, thank you to staff for repeatedly presenting information on this, and I've appreciated all the comments coming in from the public, all the speakers, and so state law mandates voter approval when we're wanting those tax increases greater than 1%. So the vote that we're taking today is to bring that option to the voters, so we're not voting to, to tax people. That is going to be placed on the public to make that decision on whether they want to continue maintaining the services that they have, those essential services, or if they're wanting drastic cuts. And that state 1% limit doesn't handle any of those cost increases from year to year at the same rate that, you know, those wages will increase, or those materials will increase. And I understand that there's been brought up a few times about, oh, well, you're paying this much more for staff and employees, and in different departments. And while I know some members of the public and some members of the council may not agree with every decision that's been made, our population has increased, so if staffing does increase, that makes a little bit more sense. Plus, when we had a new administration come in, they worked on a long process, that's probably still going, of reorganization. So departments were moved around, and staff were moved around, and bigger focuses put in different areas. So I understand that kind of background when looking at this big picture, and I think Councilmember Ryan explained it very, very well. Even if we do have some of those things that we might want to change, none of it equates to the sheer volume of deficit coming in the years, yeah, to come. So, and this is a, Levy-Lid Lift votes are a standard thing. I was looking up some of the other cities that were doing it, and it's like this huge long list, Tumwater, Stanwood, Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, Eatonville, Cheney, San Juan County, Duval, Bellingham, like, this is like a standard process for when people, or when, when you need that increase above the 1%, this is the pathway to do it, is send it to the public. So I am going to be supporting this, because I think it's going to be up to our neighbors to ultimately make that decision if they do want to maintain services, and while we may look at small things, you know, coming up of like, yes, we can make an adjustment here, or a small adjustment there, it's not going to be to the tune of, what was the first deficit year? Was that 16 million?
13.
13 million, and then like, just astronomically from then on, there's no possible way we can cut our way to that without making some drastic cuts, so I think the public really has to have input on that.
Thank you. Councilmembers Arlingo.
Well, thank you, President Schwab. I, I feel like a kind of duty-bound to go around the horn here and explain some of my thinking on this. I'll try to either minimize or omit things that have already been said, and certainly, I, like the rest of the council members, have thought about this a lot, really, for me, certainly in the past three years, because this has been an issue for some time. And I've tried to compare cities with cities in Snoomish County, and some in King County, as Councilmember Fosse mentioned. Of course, as I note, we are not the deciders, and there's not the decider. Our task is to understand the situation as thoroughly as we can, and to carefully recommend a course of action, so that's, I think, what we've all been trying to do. For me, one of the points is, in Washington, for example, we're all in a different situation, different states. Washington has no state income tax, so we have a different tax structure, and there is no magic number of what's right to operate a city. Everett won't be the same as other cities, we won't be the same as other states. So I think, for me, I've tried to look at what are some guiding principles in terms of how to evaluate this, what we think is, is a good answer. And a couple of those were, first, is it genuinely necessary? I recognize that dollars are hard-earned for our community members, and we should not ask for more than what we really need. We should not recommend a measure more than what we need. Another core element, another guiding principle, is is it fair? Are we asking all who can pay to do so, at least some, for the benefit of all and the support of the community as a whole? Is there relief and accommodation for our community members, who are older, low-income, veterans, disabled? And there is, that's basically a state thing for the most part, but I think that's important, because there are people who have an asset in terms of houses, but have little disposable income. Are we spending carefully and efficiently? And again, there's no magic number there, there's no perfect way to know that, but if you compare us to other cities and their situations, Everett has some special challenges, but also we have some special benefits, and I think that that, the comparison with the other cities, where we are well behind, as, as Susie's graphs have shown, we are not still going to get there. We're talking about, if you look at inflation since the time of I-747 and the, and the state law, a dollar is now worth some 57 cents, and that is with the CPI inflation. The city suffers worse inflation effects from that, and so the increase we're talking about here still takes us to around 80% of that. So we're still down 20% or so. So it's not as if we are, as if we are asking for something that doesn't comport with the, with the kind of inflation we've seen. We've been able to operate this city as a full-service city, doing these things with the general fund, and one element of that that I think is worth explaining to our community members as part of their decision is, do we get to control, and do we get to choose? One benefit of our funding major things like police, fire, parks, and social services from the city's general fund is that we can control our own choices, and as some people have noted, if we were to go with some of the other measures that we've considered and have put aside for now, we would simply be creating another line on people's property tax statements in increment. It's not as if those other measures would have somehow invoked a bunch of efficiency or some magic new revenue source. It doesn't work. It doesn't work that way. And so I've heard from community members, if we're going to pay for these things that way, we'd like to have the control and accountability on that. With respect to the increase in fairness for our renters, I spent some time looking at two or three dozen sort of typical, what I call, basic apartments, the kinds of things that I rented when I first came here. I think a lot of our workers will be renting in small families, one- and two-bedroom kinds of things, not things that are new or fancy. But trying to understand what the assessed valuations were with those apartments and making the kind of conservative estimate that landlords would pass along rent or property tax increases as rent increases. Tried to understand what those would be, and then what that would be compared to rents. And those kinds of increases are something less than 1% of rents. So we're not, it's not as if we're not talking about something that would translate to rents, but we're talking about numbers that are tiny compared to the relatively expensive rents we have around here. And I guess I do want to point out that with respect to our, to our lower-income population, those typically renting, the renters of these basic properties are also the folks who benefit the most from Everett's parks, recreational opportunities, the library, social services, not to mention fire and emergency services, public safety, first responders. They also, these folks don't have suburban backyards. They have minimal discretionary income. And certainly, from my time in the parks, I think I've seen a lot of folks there who are taking advantage of that. So I think the question is, does this suit the guiding principles? Are we doing something that's efficient? Certainly, there are improvements that can be made, but they aren't of the magnitude that really change this trajectory. And so, from that standpoint, I think I see the justification and the fairness. And that's what I need to, to compel me to go forward with putting this in front of the voters. Because again, our job here is to understand things the best we can, and then we'll be explaining this for the next several months to our community members, and they will make that choice in August.
Okay, well, thank you very much. All right, well, I guess I'm the end of the horn here. Instead of repeating all the great things you guys have said, I'd like to start off real briefly about the tax initiative system. And I think, thank you, Councilmember Bader, for that comment. It is working as it is intended. For, you know, the history of Everett, we've been responsible for working families. Our taxes have been relatively fair and lower than other cities. We've relied on a thriving industrial base. Working-class people getting their done, and a most amazing place in the state to live, with the water and the mountains. Everett has a strong, rich history. And for many administrations before this one, and councilmembers before us, they have managed to always keep public safety as a top priority and keep the revenue or the expenditure growth at a reasonable amount and enable the taxes to rise in a reasonable amount. But things are quickly changing. The problems that Everett has seen in the last few years have been incredible. Do you guys remember the accused drug trafficker that had a ring with a line on it that said I-5, and it started in Southern California, I won't mention the city, but the diamond ended in Everett? For, I call this city the coolest, biggest little town in the world. We have a lot of, we have an airport, we have a Navy base, we have some of the largest industrial buildings in the world, we have a thriving river, and you know what? We have thriving citizens. And it's just, it's an amazing city to serve. But we have come, not only to our drug trafficking and some of the problems that we face are from the outside. We haven't, the citizens of Everett have not caused these issues. These are things that have come to us from a larger and global situation. The inflation is, I mean, is absolutely astronomical, and it's deep. Demand for our services, as I somewhat demonstrated, have gone up. Everett's a unique city. We're the last holdout when it comes to like our library, our transit, a lot of rich history there, even our animal control. And I'm very proud of that. It's somewhat more complicated, of course, for all of us, but my, the residents that I talked to, they like that. I mean, everyone wants to save money, but we talk about giving up some, something that's, that we love and dear in Everett, I get a no. So it's, it is a difficult task, not only just for us, but just for the people that we serve. They're torn also. And so I think the conversations that we had, it's definitely, and the trepidation here is really a representation of who we represent. Our budget process has been amazing. I know you guys have said a lot about Susie, but one thing, I mean, you can, you can challenge a process on what services you provide and how, and how much money you can set aside or spend, but we have received some of the highest achievement awards for our transparency, for our budget. So whether or not you agree on how we're spending or where we're allocating, I can rest assured that the transparency and the accuracy of how we're doing that is incredible, and thank you for that. So, and that's important when we talk about going to, when we make these decisions about, is about trust. And trust that those represent, and I'm very thankful that I can represent the budget and the numbers that it represents. So I guess one more thing I want to discuss, and that really was, one of the things that we spend a lot of time on is, and that is looking at other services. And like, Councilmember Arlingo said, it's still a tax increase. It's some type or on some level. And even the regional fire authority is a tax diversion. It takes some of the dollars from some of our residents and transfers it to other payers, like our businesses, so. It's difficult, and when you talk about equity and how that process is distributed, and this is really, from my point of view, probably the best way that we can equitably distribute the cost to all of those that call Everett home. So thank you for all your effort, and I appreciate it. You know, we have had seven really intense council meetings that have led up to this, and I really appreciate it, and I really appreciate all the input for those that have made their opinion public and those that have had long conversations with, and really appreciate it. And thank you for all the heavy lifting. So any other discussion or comments? Okay. Clerk, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey?
No.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Vice Presidents Arlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. So, meeting's adjourned, and no further business.